He's in South Carolina. Closed on his house yesterday. Closed on the house yesterday. Uh, family's moving. It's a, I don't know. He's still working here. So he'll be here for majority of the year. He's the incoming president of Rotary Club next year, so got him at least for two years. Virtually.
Running down to South Carolina.
He's down there now, but his wife has given him. He's in one we said retired. He's like, you know. Yeah, yeah. So, um, Chair, on this one? Two? They're just adding it. Is there a, is that huge?
Are you talking about this, Eric?
Yeah. And that's the number two that you're talking about, correct?
To amend number two in the title.
Two in the title.
There's one, two.
Oh, that too. In the title, so I forgot. This is the, this is some other comments they never wrote. I don't know, I mean, I'm not gonna have any.
Michael Schwartz.
Has joined.
Oh, yeah. Such a small group. It's outside. Understand what she's.
Okay, give me my. Oh, one? Okay. Do you, um, please pack it? Go upstairs and get one. Sorry about that.
No problem.
I'd like to, I'd like to call the Regular Planning Commission. Meeting made tenth order at 6:00 P.M. Please take roll.
Commissioner Seals?
Present.
Commissioner Bernie?
Here.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Present.
And Commissioner Sage L. is absent and excused.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie, uh, would you please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the commission have any adjustments to tonight's meeting agenda? And would like to discuss the, anything under the consent agenda such as the minutes that will need to be pulled out and put under business at this time? Hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda stands as presented. All right, we'll go to reports. Do we have a report from our commissary?
Yeah, just a quick little update. I've got some reports up here, things the city's working on, but just some things to notice is we're seeing quite a bit of activity at the Menard Center, and it's really transitioning from being an event-focused business to facility rentals. And so that's really showing some, uh, good economic engine, especially if you own a restaurant here in town and all the wrestlers are here. So that's bringing a lot of people here to the city. We were awarded by, uh, the Department of Commerce a $70,000 economic development grant, and last night the council matched that 70,000. So that would be great. We have started our Fourth of July parade coordination. We are doing sponsorships this year for business. We have eight sponsorships available, and as of today, four of them were bought. So that's something new that we're doing for the parade. And then the last thing is we are sponsoring in conjunction with North Rim, a Matsui Commercial Investment and Development Forum. It's gonna be, uh, lunch at Evangelos to talk about some of the disruptions in just commercial building and supplies and workforce. So you'll wanna make sure you go to that. It's end of the month. Thank you.
All right, uh, City Attorney? I heard you online. Did you have a report?
Uh, I'm here, I'm here. No report for me today. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. And, uh, City Planner? Are you online?
Um, yeah, I'm on. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Okay, so the only thing that I would report at this time is, um, that, uh, let you guys know that the landscape review committee is going to the city council on May 23rd for confirmation of their appointment. Um, don't anticipate any problem with that, so hopefully their first meeting will be in June and then they'll start, um, doing some regular meetings. I believe it's set up for up to six months, so it'll kinda be up to them to self-regulate. And then after they get the recommendations, we'll bring them back to this commission.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. And Public Works Director, is there anything from?
Uh, well, I guess there's one thing we can report on. Uh, one thing we can report on is that we have completed the mock-up of the airport terminal. So now we are, we completed our paperwork to this ICHA, this jobs, act that's coming out, so we've got our application in with Bertowski's office. We have an appropriation from the governor and the capital budget for 14.4 million. Uh, it sounds like, uh, there may be another appropriation coming from the fence, and so we're moving along pretty fast with that.
Thank you. All right. This is the public participation portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to step forward, discuss anything that's not on the agenda tonight can do so. Please write your name, contact information on the sheet provided, and state your name for the record, whether or not you live in the city limits. You'll have five minutes in which, three, excuse me, three minutes in which to speak. All right, with seeing no one present to speak on items that aren't on our business tonight, we'll close, uh, the public participation. Time for the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I had, uh, Commissioner Bernie, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Seals second.
Are there any objections to the motion that's been made and seconded? Hearing none, motion carries. The consent agenda is approved as presented. On to new business. Mr. Crawford, could you please introduce item number one and provide your staff report?
Um, sure. For the record, Tina Crawford, City Planner, and I apologize that I'm not able to be there tonight, but I, it's better for me to be home than to be exposing all of you guys, so I appreciate your tolerance with doing it over the phone. So the, the item that's on our agenda tonight, the applicant is K&amp;H Civil Constructors. Their proposal is to amend, um, two previously approved use permits, use permit 1602 and 1702. They're looking to accomplish, um, several things. First is to extend the extraction approval period, to prove the clearing and excavation of an additional nine and a half acres, to allow excavation within four feet of the water table, increase the hours of operations for sales, rock fresh and gravel extraction, to amend the setbacks in Lake Lucille Creek from 200 feet to 75 feet, to remove the reclamation requirement to add topsoil and seed for future development, and to clear up to an additional 15% of the lot. So in this particular one, um, you have a handout tonight. There's some proposed motions. Um, they're more, um, clarifying than necessarily content-oriented. They are covered in the staff report and in the applicant's package, some for clarity. Um, in working with the city attorney, we thought these would be helpful to make sure the resolution was clear as to what was being approved. So after you, um, hear the staff report and the applicant, then if you would please consider adopting those, um, motions too. Um, so this particular one is a use permit. We elevated it, we historically elevated it because of the potential for noise for gravel extraction. The previous two had numerous comments from the public. This one did not have many com, it didn't have any comments from the public at all. Um, so I think that, um, kinda supports the request for some additional hours and operation. Um, you have a staff report on pages nine through 21. It outlines the general approval criteria that the application must meet in order for the planning commission to approve it. Um, and because it's gravel extraction, it also has specific approval criteria. Um, all of those are included in your package. They've all been addressed. Um, with the conditions of approval that are in place, um, either new conditions or existing conditions, it's staff's opinion that it would meet all of these criteria and therefore the recommendation is approval. See if there's anything else. So you have maps on 23 through 25 that, um, show you the area, an aerial, the zoning map. You have site plans on pages 26 and 27. One, um, color helps you understand the impact. The other one is the actual site plan provided by the applicant. And then you have your draft resolution 22-02 on pages 103 through 116. Um, and, you know, there was one other thing I wanted to add to that. I mean, I'll be glad to answer any questions more in depth, uh, but I think that, like I said, the record stands for itself and supports it. Um, there is, what I think was most helpful in the package, or at least it was me, which is why I included, the applicant had drafted a table, um, that outlined the request, and I modified it some just for, um, clarity of information, but it's in the staff report starting on page 10 of your package and rolling to page 11. That kinda gives you that detailed breakdown of exactly what's changing. And then your conditions of approval, um, include the amendments, um, that are going forward. So with that, um, I will stop. If you have any questions, let me have to answer them, and then I know the applicant is, has all the detailed information also.
Uh, do any of the commission members have any questions for the City Planner at this time?
None at this time.
Uh, Mrs. Crawford, Commissioner Bushnell, I do have one question for you.
Okay.
Um, you said that it was everything, everything was, um, that the applicant had agreed, had asked for was approved or not approved? Or was everything? I saw, and I wasn't sure, I wanted to ask about it, and it was the, in the resolution, in the resolution, they asked for a clarif, not a clarification, but an amendment to how much of the property could be, um, seeded and to, um, have it adhere to the same as DOT standards, which was to seed, uh, to seed the slopes, but leave the flat gravel for a future industrial base. And I saw, and I saw in the, um, conclusion that that part was actually left where we were still requiring grass and seed, or seed, soil and grass seed across the entire project.
Okay, that wasn't the intent, so let me just look real quick. If you look in your, um... Why we're in steadily in the pit, girl.
Did I misread it?
Oh, yes, no, you did not. Um, it was supposed to be stricken.
Okay.
That last sentence was.
So we need to make an amendment.
Yep, there is one additional amendment you need to make. So it's for, um, condition number 10. You would need to strike the second sentence in its entirety.
Okay.
I know why I left it there. I wanted to put a note there for that to be a subject of discussion. Um, so the reason that staff and the previous public works director did not have a concern with that revision, um, was because there's already a plan in place. The, the owner, property owner, Mr. Ketchum, has a plan in place for redeveloping that site. But you may wanna put in something in there, a time limit, that if it's not redeveloped as he's proposing within a certain period of years, you may want to have that grass requirement. Okay, so it's my understanding he wants that leave at gravel because he already has a plan to go in and do development and to go in and put topsoil and grass seed right away. Doesn't make sense when he's gonna turn around and develop it or sell it for development.
Okay. Um, City Attorney, could I ask you to weigh in here on maybe an appropriate way of, cause, um, I'm thinking we could make this really messy unintentionally.
I, I, I think the, the way that Tina suggested it would be to do a motion to make the various, uh, changes to the resolution. That'll keep it clean and it'll just make sure that everyone is on the same page, uh, and is voting on the same thing at the same time.
I, I'm, I'm referring to, um, putting a timeline on the motion that we're discussing at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Can you just, can you repeat the question again then? I'm sorry.
Sure. We, we were discussing, um, adding another motion, which we haven't got to the motion portion, but, um, item number 10, which was striking the second half of that, and however, starting with however.
That I'm, that I'm fine with.
But then Mrs. Crawford, um, made a request that potentially put in a timeline, which makes sense, that once the project is completed, in the future, if it is not done with such and such a time, that there would be, that requirement would need to be met. And I was just, without wordsmithing it up front, I'm trying to think of a way, um...
And this is, and we're talking about future industrial development, right?
Correct.
Uh, maybe you could say, I'm, I'm, I'm shooting off the hip here. Uh, if the site is not put to industrial development within X period of time, uh, the following condition, uh...
I got it.
The applicant shall be required to, you know...
You gave me the, you gave me the idea.
Yep.
I got something, I got something I can write.
I'll, I'll listen to you when you, when you, when you read it into the record.
I will try to keep it short and precise.
There we go.
All righty. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions, um, after that? Of course?
Not this time.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Crawford, do you have anything else?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Um, at this, at this point in time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward. Have five minutes, do a presentation, state your name for the record.
I brought some visual aids to help.
It'll be, it will be important that you talk into the microphone for, so the people online.
Good evening, my name is Matt Ketchum. I am a co-owner of K&amp;H Civil. Okay, I'll, I'll jump right into this. Um, I, I brought several just blown-up displays of our site plan, and these are two of the four pages of the site plan that you guys have in your packet. Um, the first one on my left and on, on your right is just a blown-up, um, color of our site plan, and... I'm gonna have to move over here so that I can help explain it. One of the things in this is for Tina, is I didn't see this specifically in the resolute, the proposed resolution, but about the pond excavation, but I guess I wanna give you guys an, an overall of this. Um, the green that you see on the right-hand side, which is the east side, is the frontage to South Clap. The green on the north line, that's adjacent to Lucille Creek, is a wetlands area and a hundred-year floodplain area, um, as defined by Matsui Borough. So those green areas quantify 12.4 acres of the parcel. The parcel is 63.3 or 4 acres. I think it's actually 63.4. So we're over the, that, that undisturbed area is in excess of the 15%, not by much, but it is. So that's the undisturbed area that we are proposing. The purple that you see is the to-be-mined and future mined area. Some of it is, is fine to be mined right now in our current, um, site plan, but most of that purple there, um, is in the, is really in the extended nine and a half acres that we wanna clear and additionally mine. Okay? What that's gonna do is, it's gonna extend the life of the pit, um, probably a year. Um, and then the pond that you see on the west side in the blue, it's approximately 6.3 acres, and we think that that'll extend the life of, um, of the gravel extraction by a season or two, depending on just the quantities that we have. So, um, that, that kinda gives you an indication of the, of the significant colors on there. The, the yellow is our staging area, our office, our truck scales, and the main entrance to this parcel, and to date, we have really only used one entrance. There is another entrance to, um, to the south of there into the largest green area that is, it's already in a, uh, an approach, a paved approach, um, that may get used in the future, um, and would, wouldn't require much clearing to use that for access into the parcel. The orange squares you see on there is a topsoil processing area, which we're gonna, um, screen and process topsoil, uh, for retail and commercial markets, and it's gonna be a very, very strong year for that. And then the largest orange is where our crusher and our, our crusher will, and our screening plant, which we own, will be, will be set and moved around quite a bit. So that's kinda the lay of, of that. That's a, that's a two-dimensional map. Uh, the other map shows some sections through the, the site plan, which will help give it that third dimension, um, to help really kinda clarify what the slopes are gonna look like, topsoil and seeding, and then what even the pond, uh, profile is gonna look like. So I, I, one of the things going through Ms. Crawford's, uh, recommendation there, it's a little unclear, and I wouldn't mind clearing it up, the hours of operation. Um, there, there's two of them in there that contradict each other, and the reason they do is on the first set of hours of operations was really for the overall operation itself. The second set was for when we were crushing, okay? So it's a little clunky in there with hours of operation, um, so maybe we can get that clarified, um, tonight.
We have, we have, we have some language to...
And I've seen the other amendments that, uh, Ms. Crawford has, and those are, those are reasonable. Um, as far as the, as far as topsoil and seeding, the, the floor of this, I mean, our plan is to subdivide this in five or six years and sell these off to other industrial-type businesses. And so if you do put some sort of stipulation on there, would that condition follow with that? And how do we split the property up? And we don't know if we're gonna have four parcels or three larger parcels. We, we don't know that yet, but, um, there is a, a, a drawing in your packet there of just kind of a, a potential plat would be. Um, one of the things my business partner and I have discussed is even once the aggregate has been extracted from the property and we've been able to redevelop, um, the floor in the area so that will sustain industrial-type uses, is that, uh, we'd like to have an asphalt plant and a concrete-ready mix plant in that, on that parcel. And then the aggregates would be simply hauled in, um, from an off-site, um, source, and this is done in, in many, many municipalities around the country, um, where you've got a, where you've got those type of, of industrial plants within the city, close to, it helps reduce traffic, and then aggregates are simply brought in in off-hours and off-season times, stockpiled, and then used in the retail and commercial market. Um, so I'm really pleased to see that, that Tina has, um, is accepting a lot of the things that we were wanting to change in this, and I would like to try to answer any questions that you guys may have specifically.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, for the record, this is Tina Crawford. Just for Mr. Ketchum, I did want him to note, if you look at, um, in the resolution that's, uh, up for adoption tonight, resolution 22-02, um, let's see, I'm try, oh, I just lost it. Oh my gosh, sorry. Oh, it's the condition number three. It does, what it does is that, condition number three says your new site plan is the one that you submitted with this package. So your old site plan, your old excavation plan goes away, and this is the replacement. So your pond is addressed. It's not specifically called out, but the condition says that you now operate, if it's approved, under this new site plan.
Thank you, thank you for that, Ms. Crawford. I, I thought the same thing, that, you know, if you, if you adopt this new site plan, um, that it clearly includes that. Um, it just didn't say it anywhere. So, I mean, that, that's fine with me, Tina, if it, it stays in there just like, um, number three.
Okay. I just wanted you to know that, yeah, it wasn't intended to replace the one you had, so it would be covered.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
And as far as questions go, we're gonna open it up for public comment first, and let you come back, and you have five minutes then to, um, add to whatever the public has said, or contradict whatever the public, whatever you need to say. And then we'll ask questions.
Thank you.
Gotta say my spiel. The public comments portion of the public hearing is now open for elevated use permit 22-02. If there's anyone wishing to speak on the item, you have five minutes to provide your comments. Please make sure you document your name for the record and let us know whether or not you live inside the city limits.
Greetings. Um, my name's, uh, Dan Kennedy. I have an active business license in the city of Wasilla. My business license is Mountain Village LLC. We're here this evening to speak, uh, in support of the new permit, 22-02. We think, uh, the applicant has done an outstanding job in the community, providing construction aggregate for not only, uh, businesses, but hundreds of families that need construction aggregate in the community. And accordingly, we think, uh, they have demonstrated, uh, high ethical standards in dealing, uh, with their businesses, and very supportive of continuing to develop this wonderful resource, uh, for the rest of the community. And it's, uh, been terrific for the whole greater Wasilla area, not just the residents and businesses within the community. It's much bigger than that, especially down, uh, KGB route. Um, also, for the record, I did suppo, I did submit positive comments in support, and they didn't show up in the packet, like on page 29 in your packet. I actually, uh, submitted those to that, uh, email, uh, address. I actually submitted those to that email address, and accordingly, the city must spam out all my email that I sent to the city. That concludes my comments, and I hope you approve the permit as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this resolution? Seeing that nobody's coming forward, we're gonna close the public participation portion of the hearing and invite the applicant back up. Is there anything else that you wish to add before the commission members have any questions?
Yeah, there is a couple more things. Thank you, Commissioner Bushnell. I forgot to mention, we have been operating on this parcel for six seasons. This is our seventh season, and we do a tremendous amount of retail sales. So we're not just selling to contractors, we're selling to, we had a grandma come in the other day and needed 20 buckets of rocks, and we assisted her because that's the right thing to do. But we're selling to, we're selling retail materials and construction aggregates, like Mr. Kennedy has said, to, you know, probably at five, at least a five-mile radius of that, of that property. I do want to mention that Kennet Goose Bay Phase 1 has advertised and will bid, scheduled to bid on June the 1st, and that goes from Palmer-Wasilla Highway to South Clap and Fairview Loop. That's Phase 1. It will probably take this season and at least one and a half more, so probably not finishing until 2024, at which time the second phase will probably advertise and bid. So we're looking at, you know, a four to five years of construction along Kennet Goose Bay. We service that area significantly. We have enough aggregates to supply some of the materials for that project, but we certainly don't want to deplete our reserves on one project coming through. I also wanted to mention for you guys' use is we have been operating, generating our own power. We do not have power along that corridor, and we are, we are next to several other industrial parcels that are gonna be very difficult for anybody to want to purchase and develop if there's no power. I've spoke with Mrs. Nygaard about this several times in MEA. It's about 1,500 feet from us, but it's gonna, it would, it would behoove the city to help push some power, Phase 3 power going along that corridor, and help develop the rest of the industrial area where we're located. And that was it.
Okay. Commissioner. Do any of the commission members have questions at this time for the hour?
None at this time.
Commissioner Bernie, I do, please.
Sure.
If I'm asking redundant questions, please, please forgive me. Relatively new to planning commission, I know this has been going on for a long time, so, just for probably more of the clarification purposes than anything else. I know that you're more than likely, or you already have a SWIP plan in place and, and put together. Would maintaining erosion control fall in that SWIP plan?
Yes, sir.
So is it necessary for that to be addressed within this ordinance? Because it looks like SWIP has already been addressed within this, has it not? I mean, by state regulations, you have to have...
Yeah, by state regulation, we have to have, we have to have a SWIP, which includes a hazardous material control plan.
Right. Okay.
So it would be redundant if it said, you know, make sure and maintain a SWIP. However, that's pretty standard language, even in DOT work and things. They'll say, you know, you need to get all of the permits that meet federal regulations, but then that will actually specifically call out a stormwater pollution prevention plan. But it is somewhat redundant, you're correct.
And then I also noticed, and I can't seem to, I saw it on, on my packet online, there was a section where it called for a three-to-one slope on sloped areas, and then I'm seeing in the ordinance, two-to-one slope.
I was gonna have a question about that here in a second, yeah, because...
Okay. Can we address it now?
You need to take that back to Mrs. Crawford.
Okay.
That will be a Tina Crawford question.
So we can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
My, my take on that, Commissioner Bernie, is two-to-one is the regs. We will most likely do three-to-ones. Two-to-ones are still relatively steep, and they're actually difficult to build. So we will, we will most likely have three-to-one slopes on there, but two-to-one is the Department of Natural Resources Reclamation Plan Regulation.
Well, my first thought was you bench, you know, you'd have to bench up, but I guess two-to-one is...
Yeah, and we don't have two, we don't have two big of slopes. We could, we potentially will have some larger ones on the southern side, but, and two-to-one is, two-to-one's pretty steep. You can build it with a cat, but...
All right. Sure. And then another question I had, I noticed there's a swale coming down to the pond, right?
Yes.
Where's the runoff on overflow of the pond, or is that not even a concern?
It is a concern, but we hired a hydrologist. The report is in there from HDL. The hydrologist's name is Doug Simon. He did the analysis on what, by building a pond, what is that going, I mean, where is it gonna equalize? And if water does infiltrate into that pond from that swale, which it will, it will stabilize itself. And it won't overflow, I mean, it'll get to a certain point, it's running right back into the ground. It can only...
So it perks pretty good, it runs itself out of the water table.
Yes. It perks very well in that area. And he's got a, he's got some, if you can see him in color, they helped make some sense on his analysis of the pond.
Right.
And he has some verbiage in there of where the equalization of that water table is. Because on one end of the pond, you know, we're, we've, with our monitoring wells, it's about a foot and a half to two feet higher than the other side of the pond, even that close. And so they will stabilize and equalize at some point, but it won't, won't have any negative impacts on surrounding water bodies or wells, and that's in his report as well.
Okay. And then I noticed a couple of, looks like elevation cuts in here that I didn't see. AA and BB.
Yeah, those are, these are, these are those.
Okay. I guess I just, I must have missed that in my packet then.
Yeah, I think that's four of four, and page two and three of our site plan are, are cross-sections of the entire pit. So one of them is, it goes through, right here, you see BB. And then, and then there's one here where there's AA. And the reason we did those is there is an area that we need to, we've got a fill area that we're gonna, that we're gonna grade. We're gonna either balance material from the site or import and bankable material to produce a level pit floor there.
And then the overburden pile is used to protect the creek?
Yeah, it's, it's really pushed up on the edge. It's, it's used as a buffer. It's not necessarily a creek protection, although it would certainly turn into that if there were a, the hundred-year floodplain goes, I mean, it's all, you know, it's 50, 50 feet each side of Lucille Creek.
Sure.
It's, it's more of storage if we have to come back. I mean, initially, when we're, right now, currently, we have to take a lot of that back down and spread it over the entire floor, you know, four inches. So we were storing it, but we, you need to stabilize it while you store it for, for your SWIP.
Yep.
It will remain like it is, most likely in a three-to-one slope format there, and...
Understood. And then, let's see, I had two more questions. And it's more, I guess, these have probably been hashed over, so this is more, kind of get the history of it, but it appears that there was a, 30% of the land was to be cleared and excavated, and now it's 15% of the land will remain, I'm sorry, was to remain out. Now it's 15% undisturbed.
Yeah, that was Wasilla code. When we initially got our permit in 2016, 30% was required by code to remain undisturbed. And so we showed that much undisturbed land, which is about 20 acres on a 60-acre parcel. So now the municipal code, which changed the year after we got the permit, the municipal code is 15% needs to remain undisturbed or lands, re-landscape once you've done that.
Sure. And then in your aggregate, storage capacity and/or, I take your brain and finds you're bringing in rock, or you'll be, you know, processing the stone on site?
Yeah, the only thing that we're importing right now is broken asphalt that we recycle, crush, and resell to the market. And then we have imported some peat from off-site so that we blend with some of the topsoil that we have, and then some of the sand that we get when we are processing some of the material that we have to make topsoil. So we're, we've got about 12 different products. We own our own screening plant. We can make about seven products, eight products with that. The remaining products that are crushed, we subcontract that out to a portable crusher that comes in and crushes for three or four months. And that's why they had some hours of operation that were different than what our business operations are, and that's where it gets a little bit clunky in those hours there.
I was assuming the processing would be the request for the off-hour, you know, opening of the site, or...
Well, the, the crushing was more restrictive than our, you know, our, even our screening and our hours of operation for retail because of the noise.
Sure.
And we were trying to mitigate that. We've had a crusher in there three different times, and we haven't gotten a single complaint that I'm aware of. So it's gone, it's gone pretty well in the way we've mitigated noise. And so there were some hours of operation for, specifically for crushing operation, but we were able to open for business and screen gravel and load gravel, sell gravel, even in the winter times, outside of those crushing restrictions.
Understood. And then are you washing anything on site?
We are not, we do not have any washed products.
Okay.
We probably should, that's a good idea, because we've, we're gonna have some water here.
It's in high demand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions after that?
Okay.
Mrs. Crawford, since you're on the line, I don't have any more questions for Mr. Catchem, but I did have a question about the two-to-one versus the three-to-one. I saw the two-to-one in the resolution, but in the packet, it was asking for a three-to-one. So is that a typo?
No, the two-to-one is a carryover from the original approval.
Okay.
It's just keeping that in there. Unfortunately, it wasn't asked to go to three-to-one, and I'm not gonna even say that I'm an engineer. Normally, I rely on the Public Works Director to tell me the difference between a two-to-one and three-to-one slope. But what it, what it's always said is it must be less than or equal to a two-to-one slope.
Okay. So a three...
And...
A three-to-one would be, would be allowed then if so desired, because it would take more materials, et cetera, and be a more stable slope, so I...
Right. That was, yeah, that was my understanding. So it wasn't, it wasn't in the list of requests, but I also didn't catch it, but it's certainly something you can amend if you think it needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I think we're good.
It'd be easier to track and hide your seat, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll just, we'll leave, we'll leave that portion written as it is, because what they're wanting to do is, is within those parameters. Yet if they wish to change, they're still within their parameters, so that's good to go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Catchem, thank you for your presentation, and I don't think we have any questions at this point in time. At this point in time, we entertain a motion on this resolution.
Commissioner Seals, Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 22-02. Resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission, approving use permit number, amending previously approved use permits U1602 and U1702 to 1. Extend extraction approval period 2. Allow clearing and excavation of an additional nine and a half acres. 3. Allow excavation within four feet of water table. 4. Increase hours of operation for sales, rock crushing, and gravel extraction. 5. Amend clearing setback from Lucille Creek from 200 feet to allow for a 75-foot setback. 6. Remove the reclamation requirement to add topsoil and seed for future development. And 7. Clear up to an additional 15% of the lot. Property is located at 1614 South Clap Street, Lot 4A Township, 17 North, Range 2 West, Section 13. The subject property is owned industrial, which requires approval of a use permit for gravel, for gravel extraction in accordance with Wasilla Municipal Code 16.12.020A3N1. Wasilla Municipal Code 16.20.020.
Very good. Thanks. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Just for clarification, it's not 4A, it's A4.
Where's that?
Read 4A, Lot 4A. It's actually A4. I just wanted to clarify.
Got it. A4. Yep. As far as 4H here's.
Dang it.
All right, we have a motion that's been made, and it has been seconded, so it now is open for discussion and amendments, and I would like to make a series of motions to this amendment. I'm just gonna make, I'm gonna do one and then discuss. Number one motion, I move to amend the title, the title of Resolution Serial Number 22-02 by inserting 22-02 after use permit in the second line as follows. Resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission, approving use permit number 22-02, amending previously approved use permit 16, number 1602. Continue, and it continues on from there.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion to amend the resolution?
Commissioner Seals, none at this time.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion number one carries. I'm gonna make motion number two to the amendment. I move to amend, this is Commissioner Bushnell, I move to amend number two in the title of Resolution Serial Number 22-02 to add the following clarifying language. 2, with parentheses, allow clearing slash excavation of additional 9.5 acres, plus or minus, comma, which includes clearing within 10 feet of the southern lot line.
Commissioner Seals, seconds.
The motion to the, second motion to the amendment has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Not at this time, Commissioner Bushnell.
Is there anybody in disagreement to this motion? Hearing no disagreement, the second motion to the amendment carries. Commissioner Bushnell, I make motion number three to amend conditional use proof number 22-02. I move to amend condition number one to remove, in parentheses, in strike-through slash underline format at the end of the sentence as indicated below. Number one, following conditions of the approval adopted in Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 16-05 AM as amended by Resolution Serial Number 17-02 AM and AA Administrative Approval Permit Number 21-16, comma, are still in effect for this general extraction operation. Here you go.
Commissioner Seals, seconds.
Okay, the third motion to the, third amendment to the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would like a little further explanation of this, of this one, if you won't mind, if you don't mind.
Sure, and in the applicant's, in the... Sure, and in the, applicants, in the application, they were requesting the additional, the clearing excavation of the nine point five acres. And in there, there was a clarification included to the, in the ten feet of the southern lot line, which is south up the hill, which had previously been an excluded area. And the ten feet is the setback for the lot zone. It was excluded in, in this, it just said an additional nine point five acres. The clarifying portion of that.
Yeah, understood. Nothing further at this time.
Okay. Is there any objections to the third amendment to the motion? Okay, hearing no objections, the third amendment carries. Amendment number four, I move to amend condition number six to add the following language, clarifying language. Number six, hours of operation for gravel extraction are limited to Monday through Friday, seven AM to eight PM, and Saturday, eight AM to five PM. That'll be for the, the gravel extraction itself, that I'll clarify.
Commissioner Seals, second.
Is there any, fourth amendment to the motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
No discussion at this time.
Okay. Is there anybody opposed to amendment number four of the motion? Hearing no, no one against, the amendment number four carries. Amendment number five. Amendment number five, I move to amend condition number eight, to add the following language at the end of the condition as indicated below. Eight, a minimum of fifteen percent of the parcel must remain in natural vegetation in the area shown on the approved site plan dated April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, comma, included as Exhibit B in Resolution Serial Number Twenty-Two-Dash-O-Two. In addition to the area shown in site plan, a ten-foot-wide vegetative buffer along the entire length of the southern line must remain undisturbed. And in parentheses, not indicated on the site plan. Period.
Commissioner Seals, second.
No discussion at this time.
All right. Amendment number five has been made and seconded. Is there anybody opposed to the amendment? Amendment number five carries. All right, amendment number six is clarifying language. I make a motion to amend- Sorry. The condition number ten, to strike portion of however, instead of leaving the pit floor as gravel, floor must be covered with topsoil and seeded with grass during the final reclamation of all phases and is completed. And replace it with, however, if the site has not been redeveloped within five years, City of Wassila may require that the floor be covered with topsoil and seeded during the final reclamation phase, after all reclamation phases have been completed.
Commissioner Seals, second that.
Okay, second, and does that, does that make sense, and-
It, it does make sense. I, when I first, my, my first go at it was thirty-six months from the adoption of this versus sixty months or five years. If that, I believe that's reasonable.
I just picked five because I have five-year leases, and they come awful darn quick.
Right. Anybody has any disagreement with thirty-six months?
I think five is well adequate in this situation, you know? Who knows what's gonna happen five years from now? But we've addressed the issue, so I think, is there any-
It's up to us. Part of thirty-six months versus five years, three years will happen fairly quickly, five years, not quite so much, but not all of the site is probably gonna get sold off and redeveloped all at once, so there'll be portions of it, so that, some of it's gonna go quickly, most likely, which would fall within, of course, three years, like you're thinking, and there'll be leftover portions that, which, which will take, sales take longer sometimes for those larger parcels, which would then allow the city to come back and say, you know, we want you to take care of the rest of this, but it also leaves that window, and it's gonna happen. Three years might happen quick, you have to make a decision five years, part of the plan's gonna happen. The other side of that is anything in this project that gets subdivided out and wants to be redeveloped inside the city limits is gonna automatically get a fifteen percent landscaping tattoo to it. So even though the whole site has a fifteen percent landscape, natural that's, that's being left, has reclaimed, everything that gets reclaimed or developed inside is gonna add another fifteen percent.
The border around the area we're talking about is already-
It won't count. It will only count-
But it's already vegetated around the area, so.
So the, so any of the, like, if you took a five-acre square industrial site out there, they put in a drive-in, and they set ten industrial sites, take fifty acres of, I'm just using a round number, but it doesn't add up. Each one of those is going to have a fifteen percent landscape requirement, according to industrial. And so, and that's not gonna be the same. So there is, there are some not complete control challenges in the future. Should it drag on? Because if it's not developed, it won't, it won't trigger those. But then if it is developed, it'll get triggered quicker, and then at five years allows the city to come back in.
I guess in either case, whether it's thirty-six months, sixty months, five, whatever you wanna say, they still have to come back in either case for either an extension or some sort of plan moving forward. Either way, I'm okay.
So the motion is at, at five at the moment. We have one person with like, three years.
I meant five.
I made it at five, so we'll get, stick it at five at the moment. City Attorney, are you okay with that language?
Yes, I'm okay with that language.
Is there any further discussion? Is there anybody opposed to amendment number six? Hearing none, amendment number six carries. So the, all right, so the new motion-
Get it all straight.
I'm gonna see if I can get this right. See if I can get it right, the first-
The A and the fourth.
I will not, so. There's a motion that's been amended to approve Wassila Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number Twenty-Two-Dash-O-Two. A resolution of the Wassila Planning Commission, approving use permit Twenty-Two-Dash-O-Two, amending previously approved use permits, number sixteen, U-Sixteen-Dash-O-Two, and number U-Seventeen-Dash-O-Two, to, one, extend the extraction approval period. Two, allow clearing and excavation of additional nine point five, plus or minus acres, comma, which includes a clearing of, within ten feet of the southern lot line. Three, allow excavation within four feet of the water table. Four, increase hours of operation for sales, rock crushing, and gravel extraction. Five, amend clearing setback from Lake Lucille Creek from two hundred feet to allow a seventy-five-foot setback. Six, remove the reclamation requirement to add topsoil and seed for future developments. And seven, clear up the additional fifteen percent, to clear up to an additional fifteen percent of the lot. Period. Property is located at one six one four South Clap Street, Lot A4 Township, Seventeen North, Range Two West, Section Thirteen. The subject property is zoned industrial, which requires approval use permit for gravel extraction in accordance to Wassila Municipal Code Sixteen Dot Twelve Dot Zero Two, Zero A in parentheses, three in parentheses, and Wassila Municipal Code Sixteen Dot Two Zero Dot Zero Two Zero. Clerk, could you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Seals?
I agree.
Commissioner Bernie?
I agree.
Commissioner Bush now?
I agree. The resolution is agreed and passes. Thank you. I'm not reading it again.
You wanna take a break?
Usually I read it again.
I'm a lot better on that than the motions.
Hey, I'm just warming up.
I just had to add it.
Just warming up. So, on that note, unfinished business, there's no unfinished business, we'll move on to Communications. Did you, everybody have a chance to look through the permit logs and the, I didn't see anything on enforcement, so that, we haven't, no tickets as, as of late. And the Wassila Planning Commission, again, if you guys looked at that, there were three different things that were going in there.
What happened to the one that was supposed to go last time?
All right, since there's no comments, I'm gonna move on to audience participation at this point in time. If anybody here can come up and speak on whatever you'd like to speak about, you may. Same will state your name for the record. This closes the audience participation of our hearing. Do any of our staff members have any comments? City Attorney, you still there?
I'm here, no comments from me.
Ah, I thought maybe you snuck out on us.
Never would sneak out on you guys.
City Clerk?
You mean City Planner? I have no comment.
I can't comment.
Okay. You still there? You're still here.
I am still here. Thank you for your hard work, and I apologize for all the motions, but I think it'll be a, a much better document, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner comments? I have one comment. Thank you, everybody, for working through this, and thank you, Commissioner Bernie, for, for the questions you do ask, because while we may have gone through this over the last four or five years, six years actually, not everything is always top of mind, so there's, there's no bad questions. Thank you very much. And without further ado, at seven oh one, commission is de-resented. Done.